Call the meeting to order. We have a citizen in the... And she would like to speak.
Good afternoon. Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. I came to register a complaint about the last zoning commission meeting. And my complaint is that it was, as you can see from your... Not recorded. And I was very concerned about that because many of the statements that were made, I had a lot of concern about, and I think other people in the community would have had a lot of concern about, had they been able to hear it. And I investigated because I went to tell all these people what got said in this meeting, and there was no record of it. And since our minutes are official, and what I found in my investigations was that the person who was supposed to record them was told by the city administrator to not come. And that causes me a great deal of concern because the work that P and E was doing was being presented to you. And other times, we've also had problems when work from P and E has come over here and not been reported accurately. And I'm not really sure that what y'all said was reported accurately, but we can't really see all that, you know, so that's my opinion, you know. But it... There's no record, so we can't evaluate that. And so, um... So that causes me a lot of concern because at least one committee worked an entire year. And I will tell you that from my memory, a thing that I would want included in the minutes, was the part where the city administrator thought that the comprehensive plan should be dug up from its infrastructure, or words close to that effect, and tossed out, you know, below its infrastructure. And I didn't think that was an appropriate comment. I think a lot of people on the committee wouldn't think that was an appropriate comment. And I certainly would like that notated in the minutes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's my statement and my complaint. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Um, I was not here.
I did notice, and you'll see that my packet is highlighted where the blanks are, because that is concerning to me.
And that the, uh...
Yeah, both places.
It said, "I opened the meeting," I think.
Yeah.
So that's obviously just a pull-over from a previous meeting and... So...
Is this one being?
Is it being recorded now, or...
It is being recorded now. We're in...
Not just live stream, but recorded and saved for posterity.
Not just live stream, but recorded. We were in the process of transitioning. Matt was on vacation. We have another staff member who's in the control room who works on overtime and had worked a lot of overtime already. So I didn't feel the need to have him livestream it, but I was under the impression it was still being recorded, so that is my bad. There is no malicious intent to prevent your hearing of the planning and environmental recommendations for the comp plan. I think the issue becomes, the discussion that was at the dais was that the comp plan as presented is very long, and it should be a much slimmer document. That was the consensus of most of the zoning commission, but we didn't get into the meat and potatoes. So there's no undermining any work because we haven't touched any of the work. We did a cursory review. We will be jumping into the work as the other committees get done and pass their recommendations on to you, and we go through the work.
You were transitioning into this new recording thing?
Yes.
And it records automatically whether there's personnel onsite or not?
No. There still has to be... There's a person in the control room now, Duncan. I don't know if you guys have met Duncan. He's a Public Works employee. This is... These are ancillary duties that he does. And Matt is backup, and we have another Public Works employee, Dakota, who is also backup.
So Matt, he's training you? He's train... He's training you?
Yes, I will be sitting in there for the next council meeting to learn the system. So that we'll have backup. And then we also have Dakota, who's... Well, not Duncan's direct supervisor, but kind of helped install a lot of this. So he ran it for a meeting that Duncan couldn't be at. So we'll have plenty of people in case, you know, someone's out that we have someone to operate it. I'm not probably going to be as fancy as Duncan, but I will know how to turn it on, start the YouTube, and start the recording. So basically, anytime using YouTube, the good thing about it is anytime we use it, it automatically records and not... We don't have to do it on the city server. So it uploads to YouTube the minute, you know, it livestreams. So we... Yeah. You know, apologies if it happens last... What it happened, but, you know, we have limited staff, so, you know, one person knows how to do everything, but we're fixing that. There's going to be multiple people trained, cross-trained to run the system. And that was why number three was listed as discussion and possible approval of the minutes. You know, I did discuss with the city administrator the actual discussion items, and I was hoping that we all collectively could. So obviously, Chair, you were absent, so I can make that amendment.
Matt, don't...
I'm just going to be editing these as we go.
Don't worry, Matt. I'm going to move that we scrap the minutes entirely and say that due to staff error and inaccuracies, we do not accept them.
Okay. So you don't want to, like, try to work it out?
Just a note saying that the staff did not record and that these are inaccurate and that we're rejecting them. That's what I want as the motion. That's what I wanted to say in the official city rec...
So you're making a motion?
In the city records, I wanted to say that this was not recorded, this is inaccurate, and we're rejecting them.
Right. So what is inaccurate? What is inaccurate?
The minutes.
The minutes that I never intended to... They weren't intended to be accepted as this.
Yeah.
So we were supposed to work on them collectively?
So, and that's what he's saying. He doesn't want to work on them collectively.
They were just a placeholder until we could talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah. That meeting didn't happen.
Okay. So can you repeat the motion, please?
That due to recording that happened and the placeholder minutes being inaccurate, we're not going to adopt minutes from that meeting.
At this.
Ever?
It's his motion.
Yeah. I stopped before the "at this time." And I'd point out that Sylvia also said nothing happened, so nothing happened.
I think the only action that should have happened at the last meeting was to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. So... Yeah.
We can take those up later if you want.
Yeah. Do we want to do that since we don't have... I guess we don't have a record of...
Yeah, some of the meetings are not.
Oh, it's not on the agenda. So...
How about next... How about this? A direction from the commission? Well, I'll still get your motion because there's a motion on the floor, but can we bring back the minutes from whatever, you know, minutes were... Bring back the minutes from April 27th. Bring back the minutes from April 27th and...
Strike the minutes from...
Just strike the minutes from May 24th.
With the note that I had, you know.
With the notes that there was no...
It's not... We had a meeting. It just wasn't recorded.
No, there were no minutes taken. There were no minutes taken.
Nothing recorded, right?
Yeah. And, yeah, okay. A motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor. Have a second?
A second.
Uh, a discussion? All in favor? Okay, now are you going to post April up on the screen for us through you?
No, that's...
Okay, has to be on the agenda. Okay. Very good. All right. Moving on. Item three, discussion of possible approval of the minutes. Oh, wait. Item four. Item four, we're going on. Presentation, discussion, and possible recommendation of the City Council of minor code amendments for improvements to the city's development process.
So, Commissioner, this really is a discussion that has happened throughout the last probable year with council as things arrive at zoning commission and they get punted to council and perhaps punted back to zoning commission or punted to Board of Adjustment. And that is really because one of the critical pieces in our code right now says "May." The appendix information that has some very critical information related to the decisions that may be presented to council and zoning commission or Board of Adjustment may not be required until some of that information is presented to the bodies, and the bodies decide there is not enough information, and so you ask for those additional appendices. What I would like to do is take that out of the "May" and put it into a shell. And I'd like to have that shell at the very beginning because it allows us to see a complete application. It allows us to really do our due diligence on what variance is and to see a complete picture of the project. More importantly, though, we get into this shot clock legislation that once we accept things, we have a certain time period to review. And right now, we're out of that shot clock because we're out of sequence. We accept something, and it's not really quite complete because somebody may ask for something later on, and we have this ping-pong effect that draws out a process. We've only had one applicant really try to push us into, "You must approve it because you did approve it by accepting it." And so this is really a move to encourage a more complete and accurate submittal at the front end, so we are not ping-ponging back between the legislative bodies and between the decisions or having one decision have a domino effect and require a variance, for example. And the example that consistently comes to mind is 4715. We gave a variance on the parking lot, on impervious cover for the parking lot. That ended up having a negative impact on the trees. When it got to council, council had an issue with the negative impact on the trees and so sent us back. And then we did a modification on the impervious cover, which then did a modification to the site plan, which then did a modification to the variance in place, which then did a modification to some encroachments. So I'm trying to stop all of that and get us a complete picture at the front end.
Does that keep a developer from changing after the complete?
Correct.
I have a couple comments. The first is a... Just a net, but in the cover letter it says legislative process. It might be a legislative mandated shot clock, but what we're doing here is the administrative process. A legislative process is more like an ordinance, something that has future applicability of general applicability, whereas an application is a specific applicability in the future as opposed to, let's say, an adjudication, which is a specific applicability for things in the past. So I'd call this an administrative process rather than a legislative process, but the shot clock is administrative, is legislatively required by state law. So that's that. The other thing is, we have encountered this here with the special use permits or permits, zoning changes that come in, and they say that a traffic study may be required by the zoning commission, but it doesn't say is required. So inevitably, we get here, and I say, "Where's the traffic study?" There isn't one. Bring us back a traffic study. Where we had that at the beginning, as Sylvia pointed out. And I think the endeavor... You're endeavoring to do this is correct. We need everything upfront and let them know. This is List A, this is List B, whichever one is applicable to you, you must need it. So I'm in favor of doing that. The one issue that I would have, though, is in the language, we used to have 10 days for staff to review, and now it's three days, three business days. Why is that?
What page are we on?
It's the section 150.014. And if you guys could number these, that would be great, you know, just PDF, number the PDF.
Okay.
That way we... Now I can say, you know, "Bob, it's page number..."
I'm with you, though. Go ahead.
And it's section C, I should say subsection C. And you'll see the first line, strikes 10, goes to 3. And I'm curious as to the reason or rationale behind that. And the other thing is, if it is 3, I want there to be something that says the city's not... In other words, we don't have 3 days to bring up all issues. If day number 7, you see something that's a problem, I don't want a developer or some other person to say, "You had your 3-day window. That is now closed. It is now day 4. You cannot bring up anything else." That's not the intent.
No, no. So the 3 days is really for administrative review. It is, we have the application submitted because we don't currently have a formal application and checklist, right? So in a perfect world, or in a close to a perfect world, we should, the applicant should have a checklist that they check off that all of these pieces are in their packet, and they sign it off, and it comes to us. We should be able to review that information. Yes, these pieces are here. Yes, the North Arrow is on the plat, all of the things that are required for us to do review right now. And that's that 3 days. It is simply, the pieces are all complete. It is not a, "This piece is there, but it's going to need a variance or anything." This is just, I have enough information to accept it into the system.
So in, before some of the regulatory bodies that I practiced before, there is a status called administratively complete. An application is administratively complete. It is not a determination of sufficiency, and it is not a determination on the merits.
Correct.
It is simply, the boxes have been checked.
Correct.
It could be crud that has been filed.
Correct.
It doesn't necessarily get you over the hurdle.
Correct.
But there's something there.
Correct.
So I'd like that language kind of written in that you got 3 days to deem it administratively complete. And then language at the end that says, "This does not preclude the city from finding insufficiency in what has been filed." So if Matt can get to the Word document, we can wordsmith it, or I can wordsmith something now, and then we can try to make a motion on that later. Or would you rather have a motion and then try to fix it?
Yeah, I can pull up the Word document. No, it's in the folder. The other part to that is, you're right, there are... We don't have an administratively complete section in our code right now. And the other thing that makes it very difficult for staff when an application is submitted and there's bits and pieces is we've taken it in and the clock is running. And so we're going to have to have a... An okay with denying projects in the process because if things are not kosher, things are not meeting the requirements of the code, it should be denied. And that doesn't mean we're going to deny it because we don't want you in our city. That doesn't mean we're going to deny it because we hate this project. That means I owe you essentially due process within a certain period of time, and here is my attempt at doing that so that you have a good set of information. I have a set of good information, and we're all working toward the collective good of a project that meets the intents of the code.
But the flip side of that is also important. I noticed we took out the 45-day backstop.
Correct.
Is that because it exists somewhere else?
No, because we have 30 days in the code. We have 30 days in the state code. In the local government code.
Okay. So...
So we've attempted to back our timeframes into that, which is, we need to have the backbone to deny sometimes along the way. And again, it's not denying because I don't want your project. It's, I have to deny it, otherwise I put the city in harm's way by accepting something that is detrimental to us and...
It's not necessarily denial with prejudice. It's denial for administratively incomplete applications. Without prejudice, they can file... Without prejudice, they can file next week with everything.
Correct. But it's not just administrative in nature. For example, as we go through the administratively complete review, all the pieces might have been there, but, you know, they're drawn with crayon and we can't make heads or tail of it. When it goes into multidisciplinary review, we find that their impervious cover calculation table, for example, is missing or is incorrect, or there are things on their survey that are not correct, there's buildings and structures that aren't there. Those are the kinds of things we normally uncover before we even get to the real meat and potatoes of a site plan and application. Those kinds of things require us to return that application within a window that says you need to go back and fix that. It might have been administratively complete, but it is certainly not an application that warrants us continuing to review when there are critical pieces of information missing.
So, that's the sufficiency review. First is the administrative complete, then sufficient, and then comes the merits. And you're saying we have 30 days to complete a sufficiency review?
It is a very quick timeline.
Okay.
And so, what other cities have done, which we haven't done, and we may move toward this, is there are listed application cycles. You will submit on January the 1st and you can expect to have, assuming everything is perfect and complete, you can expect to have your hearing by February 2nd or January 28th or something like that. And we only accept during those windows because it puts staff in a cycle to know what is due and what is coming, and our work benches, so to speak, are filled with what we know has a clock running to it.
So, what happens if the applicant does not return stuff to you? That's where you just, we develop the backbone to say, "Go away."
Yes, yes, and we don't do that right now. We try to work, we try to work, we try to work, and what happens is, there are things that change along the way. They've kind of gotten an inkling that, "Oh, man, that was, that impervious cover was incorrect, so I'm gonna submit this, but, oh, man, that's gonna require a variance. I wonder what I can do to get out of the variance," or is there, you know? So then we begin to have negotiation, really, that isn't and shouldn't be negotiating. It should be that there is a complete quality product that is submitted. We review it based on its completeness, sufficiency, and merit, and then it can continue along the continuum. Right now, we have things along the continuum that have no business being there simply because that's what we've been doing and that's the schedule it's been following. Okay, I have the Word document up now.
Sylvia Hu, if you're not, say you had an emergency, had to go to the hospital, missed your 3 days, is Matt authorized to do that in your absence, or...
Yes, we have, Matt is training on development. We also have two third parties who will review. We have McComas who does review on the vertical, right, the building side. And then we have our Freeland Turk engineers and also Carolyn, who will do what I call our horizontal stuff, our site development, our watershed permits, and those kinds of things. So, if I'm not here, there are, we are a team anyway. When I say multidisciplinary review, we are meeting with the applicant, all of us, and trying to check off all of the boxes that need to be checked off related to the project. After those 3 days. So, yes, so that's the other thing is, we have not had a history of having what I call early assistance meetings where the applicant comes in, lets us know what they're doing, we give them a, "Mmm, this is what you're gonna need. These are the things that are outside the lines that you're trying to color in. These are the things that are gonna make a complete application." We're encouraging those more and more. And then the other thing for projects that are ready to go vertical, for example, is pre-construction meetings. We make it a point to meet with the contractor here to make sure that everything is being covered that needs to be covered, everything from, you know, site development and erosion controls to the appropriate line sizes and things, and the agreements that the council and Board of Adjustment and everybody agreed to, that's actually getting built on the ground. So, I am ready for any wordsmith.
Right after, mine's redlined, yes, yours is redlined, in between the black and the red.
Application defined, where, which section?
Section 150.014.
Okay.
C. That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reitz.
And so, this...
So, it would be at the end, essentially, of what stays.
This does not preclude the city...
From finding that the information is not sufficient to support the application after the 3 business days.
Would this also be the section that we would put, if it says within 3 business days of filing? Is this where we put, where administratively? You wanted that 3 business days stress that, that's for finding the application.
Should I write the applicant with written notice of the...
That 3 business days, like you said, it's not about the sufficiency of the merit, right? Or it's more about...
Right.
And that's the idea of the application?
Or it could go there. That where the, within 3 days of filing, the city administrator or other city staff shall make a determination on the administrative completeness of the application and provide the applicant with written notice of the, of any failure.
Wait, wait. Completeness of the application, what you've got.
And provide the applicant, then what's there, you know, then it goes into what's there of, but it's not the failure, but any failure.
Any failure?
Yeah. Hold on, hold on, let's... Oh, I would say of the, rather than of the failure, apply the, you know, provide the applicant with written notice of the necessary documents, or the documents necessary... Well, hold on, you've got, because you've got already, take out failure. And the, and the... There you go. And the documents necessary that you added before that, I don't want there.
Provide the application with written notice of...
Yeah, take that out. Then go, "That specifies..."
And provide the applicant with...
The 2 words, "That specifies."
And provide the applicant with written notice. Okay, "That specifies the necessary documents or information required."
By, right, and I think, Mr., yes. I think we've got another comment coming in here.
I was gonna try to simplify it by saying, "Notice of the deficiencies in the application."
I would accept that, that's good.
Little easier, little broader.
Yeah.
And provide the applicant with written notice of the deficiencies.
Of the application.
Yeah. "That specifies," with written notice, "that specifies the deficiencies of the application."
Is that it?
Yeah.
And then we, the rest is here, is the 45 days, but we got an explanation on that. So, that would be my only, and then application defined. The only thing there is, you've got an A, normally you've got an A, you have a B, there isn't a B, so...
Under...
The very end. Last, last part of this document. There we go. Normally, if you have an A, you gotta have a B. So, I just take the A out and have that sentence followed by this code. Yeah. Excuse me? There's no B.
There's got to be a B.
I just have one question, and that is, it says, "These amendments had been presented to council in 2 work sessions and have been discussed with the Board of Adjustment. Can you tell me if you think these changes we are making will be acceptable to the City Council?"
I believe so. The issue that Board of Adjustment had was related to the quality of the application and the application material, and I think that is related to not having a formalized process or policy in place of what constitutes a complete application or what has been historically approved. So, we are moving to create just a standard packet with a checklist that everything looks the same. So, that was Board of Adjustment's issue. Council's issue was more of the, "I don't wanna keep seeing it. We keep seeing things in bits and pieces and I'm making decisions that have impacts in areas I didn't wanna have an impact." So, yes, I believe council would adopt it.
I appreciate that, because once they've spent time on it and then we come back, we... We, yes, some days it has to stop, and these, I think, are an improvement. Are they something that life will go on without? Yes, it will, but as long as they think that council is gonna prove it, I'm okay with it. Very good, thank you.
So, I will, I mean, this is not to preclude discussion, but at this point, do we have a citizen comment?
You can have your motion first and then I'll...
How do you wanna handle it?
You can have your motion.
Yeah.
You wanna voice the motion out or revoice the motion?
The motion would be that we amend these changes consistent with our discussion and what we now have on the screen.
Point of order, since it hasn't been seconded, the motion would be to delay it and then ask for citizen comments. I so moved for citizen comments. There's a second, then we have second comments, then we can go back to the motion.
Well, the motion's...
Is that sound correct?
Right, the motion's out there, but we can now have a point of order, right? So, I, and I'm not gonna challenge it.
Yeah.
So, are you making that point of order?
I'm making a motion that we have, opened it up for public discussion and then go back to the motion.
And I have no problems with that. Chair?
Is there a second to the motion? Now that you have the point of order, or we do the point of order first?
Point of order needs a second.
Needs a second.
Go to the second.
Second.
All right. So, now we do public discussion before the vote, or we do a vote?
So, you can have a motion on the floor and then have discussion.
Okay.
So, like, you don't have to vote right away unless someone calls the question?
Okay.
So...
Yeah, and I'm not calling, I'm allowing, I'm allowing for discussion and comment.
I appreciate the help of the Roberts Rules of Order. Oh, my God. Okay, Ms. Melissa, would you like to...
Thank you, sir. Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. I have about 4 or 5 little items, housekeeping items. My experience of this is perhaps a little different than the way that it was narrated by the city administrator. I thought it originated in the Board of Adjustment with the lack of the check sheet and that they had a little talk about that, and then it went to City Council.
Could you step closer to that microphone?
Sure, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I complained that it hadn't come to zoning during the City Council thing, and I think that kicked it over, back over to here. But anyway, neither here nor there on those things. I think the submittal cycle date is very important. This change came in when I went on council and about the 30-day shot clock, and it's already, I think, bit us at least once. So, I think that having a submittal date now where we have a cycle is really critical. And because I am concerned that the city administrator seems to be really the point person, and I have enough of a problem with that, but if she's out, then we're in trouble. And then if she's not out and it goes to Freeland Turk, then we have, we continue to have our soaring engineering costs. And so, I have concerns about that as well. We did, used to have full preliminary development meetings pretty much every Friday, and I attended one, and it was a regular occurrence, and I was told when I was on council that they were gonna continue, but I haven't heard of that happening. So, the other point that I will add, where it has that push to district court, which I'm just gonna keep saying is I don't think is a good idea. It's like, I think things should come to City Council. We have a very anachronistic little city, and we make our rules that are very environmental. A district court is not familiar, and I don't think they care about it. I don't think that when they are the endpoint of all our quirky little laws, our quirky little laws are gonna go by the wayside. And we care about them, and they take a lot of understanding to see where we come from, and I don't want that to disappear. So, I am gonna continue to be opposed to district court instead of City Council being the final appeal. I think it's a very developer-friendly approach that the city administrator is pushing, and I am not in favor. We can still do it. There's a lot of things that were grandfathered into that we won't get back if we abandon. And that's one of the things we're grandfathered into, and I think we should keep it. So, I think it's important that our submittal sheet, which I haven't seen yet, that probably should have come out of that BOA meeting, is accurate, and I think you guys should see that submittal sheet because you have had equal problems with things coming to you that were not all the way prepared. And that's the end of my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has a question. Thank you.
Yeah, so I've been doing this, I've been involved in the city a long time. We have not had a lot of processes as far as applications, so we're developing that for Board of Adjustment. They were shocked to learn that we didn't even have an application, or when someone comes before the board, it's always just been discussion with staff and then a letter is written. So, it's like, when is it actually submitted? You know, there's, you know, there are applications in place already for zoning amendments. Of course, it needs to be updated, or it was updated in the past few years. And then there are, of course, special use permit applications, which you all have seen all the time, but you all see those all the time. But there are, I think the board was kind of shocked to learn, "Oh, there's not an actual official application," right? So, or process. So, staff is working on developing those. But as far as, I just wanted to mention, as far as district court, so, an appeal, again, the Board of Adjustment, if a case of a variance goes before the Board of Adjustment, any appeal to that goes to district court, and that is something that we, as a city, don't have control over because we are, you know, we are a general law city, so if... It's in the local government code, yeah.
The Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board. So, any appeal to Board of Adjustment goes to district court.
That's where the legislative is supposed to, judicatory is supposed to...
Yes, yes, that's not a city administrator recommendation.
That's in the judiciary body.
That is the law, yes. So, let's clear that error up. And again, the assumption that there are processes and applications in place, that is not the case. That is not the case. We're striving to get there, we're striving to induce a lot of continuity, we're trying to plug up some holes that create havoc for staff in terms of time and efficiency of processes, and you would be amazed if you came to visit us some days about how we get our work done despite not having a lot of the tools in place.
So, is it correct that there are... Well, you said there's nothing hanging out there right now, but if, is it the direction of what we're doing, what the council is doing, is it to maintain our sovereignty as much as possible?
I would, I would say that, yes. It is not only to maintain our sovereignty, but I don't, I don't think that's a question, but rather it is to maintain and to continue to protect the values that we espouse as a city. Watershed protection, green space, open spaces. There are only certain places in the code where a city has the ability to exact certain things, and they're very limited places, and most of those are in the subdivision or the platting process, very early on. You have some opportunity with some give and take with some cases that are before you, if the applicant is willing to give on certain things. You heard some of that discussion with the 6105, with the restaurant that's going in. We talked about buffers. That was a give and take at Board of Adjustment, that was a give and take as we talked about the rezoning. But very far and few between... But very far and few between places where you can actually say, you must do this because this is important to us, and if you don't do this, you're not going to get this. What I'm trying to do is, we lay out those things that are important to us at the very beginning, so there is no question, and there is no out from the applicant to not provide those things. And there's a lot of administrative outs in the code. You didn't give it to me in a timely fashion, you didn't give me appropriate notice, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I want to remove all of those gray areas in as much as I can, so that you have a good piece of information before you from which to make decisions.
Any questions, gentlemen?
It's the piece that we have to do on the baby.
So we can go back to the motion in a second?
Second? Second, revisions as proposed.
All right, now you got me confused, because you seconded his, but-
He seconded it.
So we completed yours.
But we just gave it, of course.
Okay.
Now back to calling the questions. Is that- Yep. John had seconded, John, did you second the revisions? You did, didn't you?
Uh-uh.
We're going, Bob- It's on the table now, I think. It's on the, yeah, that's, that's-
I don't think it was seconded. So Bob, Bob Reitz-
I'm seconding the motion that they made the changes.
Okay, now we have a second to Miguel's motion to accept. And then, just, so the motion is to recommend these changes as amended and captured on the screen with you all's edits. That's the motion, to recommend to council, right?
So we got, we got a motion, a second, and we're having discussion.
Discussion, right.
Okay.
Do we really need to say as on the screen? Because that camera's not picking up the screen, is it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I usually say in the minutes, I usually say, and the edits made, capturing the edits made live, or edits made in real time, so does that, is that acceptable?
No, if you've used that before, as on the screen.
Because, I mean, we do that a lot, where, well, we did that with the SDRs, you know, I would say edits made in real time.
I mean, continuing with what we've been doing. Yes.
End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So we just, we just did five? We do item five?
No, we did not do item, no, we did item four, now is item five. Which is the scheduling, future meetings, and we're talking about us coming up in November.
Correct, yeah.
The comprehensive plan comes to this body in November, but there should be joint committee meetings, doesn't say who the joint committees are, this month, which is nine year done, and next month, and then in November, we have our shot at it, all bar little lonesomes, as I remember the plan.
Yeah, so the-
My question is, who are the joint committees that are meeting this month?
Right.
This week?
Again, this was the calendar adopted by council. As you could see, it was adopted June twenty-first, as you can see, we're a little behind, but council did adopt a vision statement. They had a work session Saturday, so they adopted the vision statement there. I know PNE is discussing the comp plan again at their meeting, their next meeting next week, CED is discussing it at their meeting, so it's still kind of in that committee stage. A joint committee meeting has not been scheduled yet. I believe when council and staff were discussing this calendar, when we said joint committee meeting, I think it'll be similar, we had a, we had a committee meeting back in the summer for the Arts Commission, CED and PNE, that kind of met, and they discussed like project and event planning. So I think it'll be similar to that, where any, almost any committee involved, which is pretty much all the committees, right? And whoever wants to participate in that meeting can meet, you know, Public Works, PNE, obviously, CED for the economic piece. So it'll be a joint meeting of those committees, but then the committee members that are interested and want to work on the comp plan and have comments can come and participate.
It's kind of like a UN kind of thing.
Yes.
Can zoning declare war on PNE?
No, but Board of Adjustments, we can.
So really, that's all this item was, was just, just presenting the schedule to you guys, and, yeah, we, we plan to have a meeting, and, yeah, probably, most likely, November. So we'll, we'll try, fourth meeting in, fourth meeting in, fourth, Thursday, fourth Wednesday in November sounds like it would not work, so it'll probably have to be earlier in, in November.
Thanksgiving holiday with the comp plan, right?
Right. But so probably mid-November, I'll, you know, is when we'll schedule the meeting to review the comp plan, and any, you know, additional edits and/or proposals that are made between now and then to the comp plan.
I believe you answered my question, and that is, we expect constant changes in this thing over the next couple months?
I don't want to say constant change, I want to say at least a red line and recommended changes. At the end of the day, council's going to have the final say, but there is, some committees have raised significant concerns about items that either are included or perhaps not included in the comp plan. I know this particular body had concerns over the length of the plan, and so we're going to try to balance all of it at some point in the document. It's my hope that when it gets to you and legal, that it is to the point where only your comments now remain, and then it gets punted to council. In our code, the comp plan has to be reviewed by the quote-unquote Planning Commission. And in our code, the council is the Planning Commission. So at the end of the day, council will take all of those things into account and approve or deny the final document.
And hopefully, we will also have a draft FLUM future land use map, and obviously, that's very close to home for zoning. So that will hopefully, the draft FLUM will be presented to you all in November, and you can, you know, discuss that, because that is one piece that's not been added to the revised comp plan yet, is a revised future land use map, which is very important.
I don't particularly have any confidence that it's going to be shorter than it has been in the past, so if, if it's going to be a long document, give us a little time to review that before the, before the meeting, whenever that meeting gets scheduled.
Understood, understood.
All right?
Well, chair?
Yes, sir.
Since we don't have to take any action on that item-
Not an actual item.
Not an actual item, as well.
Actionable.
Actionable item, because some of us have somewhere they need to be at seven o'clock. Mr. Boozer?
Yeah.
I am going to motion that this body adjourn.
He beat you to it. All right, as may it say, it all in favor?
I was going to say no, because I'm kind of enjoying this, but yeah, I'll agree.
It's, it's more exciting than anything that you have planned at seven o'clock, obviously.
He's got it planned, I don't.
Oh, oh, okay.
We will, we will be sure to let certain people that you live with know that you'd rather be here than with her. See how that goes.
The recording has stopped, hasn't it?
I hope the recording stops, for both of our state.
By the way, I was going to tell you, it's downtown a couple weeks ago.